Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the combined joint meeting, I should say, of the Chatham Select Board and the Waters and Sewer Advisory Committee of August 10, 2022. Please let the record show, we started promptly at 5:33. I have my deal to read, and I'll read it. Pursuant to Governor Baker's July 16, 2022 signing of an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, including the extension of his March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, generalizes Chapter 38, Section 20 until March 31, 2023. This meeting of the Chatham Select Board in the Waters and Sewer Advisory Committee is being conducted via in-person and remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in that order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 390-733-796, or join the meeting via online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. Good evening. Our first order of business in this joint meeting is to convene, we'll convene the Select Board, and then the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee will be convened by Vice Chair Deb Aikman. Then the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee will reorganize, and then we'll go on to the business of the evening, okay? So first of all, I'd like to convene the Select Board, and I will start with Mr. Castro. Are you here, Mr. Castro?
Present.
And Ms. Davis?
Present.
Ms. Shell?
Present.
And Mr. Madder.
Present.
The Chair is present as well. Debbie, off to you.
Thank you. I call the meeting of the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee to order, and we'll start with a roll call vote. Jeff Colby?
Present.
Bruce Bogardis?
Present.
Bill Cook?
Present.
Ann Ryan?
Present.
And I'm Debbie Aikman, President. The first order of business is to reorganize, and I'd like to start the reorganization by nominating Jeff Colby for Chair of our committee.
I second that.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, can we just take a vote on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
I'll abstain, Debbie.
Vote call vote? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Jeff?
I'll abstain from that vote.
Okay, Bruce?
I favor.
Go.
Favor.
Ann?
Yes.
And the Chair favors. Okay, at this point, do I turn this over to Jeff to do the nominations of the Vice Chair?
Yes, she would. Yep, yes, she would. Yep.
So we can swap seats?
If you'd like.
I'm comfortable here.
Take it away, Jeff.
So I'll certainly take in any nominations for Vice Chair?
I would like to nominate Ann Ryan. I'm sorry. Ann, do you want?
I was going to nominate Debbie Aikman, Vice Chair.
All right, any second?
A second, Debbie, for Vice Chair.
Well, we have a nomination and a second. Are there any others? All right, roll call vote for Debbie Aikman as Vice Chair. Bruce?
I'm in favor.
Yep.
Favor.
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Super.
Thank you very much. We're reorganized.
Super. Thank you so much, Chairman Colby, and Debbie, thank you so much as well.
Do we need to do the Clerk also, Jeff?
You know, I think so. Yep.
Okay, I'll take any nominations for Clerk.
I would like to nominate Ann Ryan for Clerk.
Is there a second?
I'd second that.
All right, nominated and second for Ann Ryan. Any others? All right, not hearing any. Roll call vote. Bruce?
I'm in favor. Favor.
I'll abstain.
I favor.
And I'm in favor as well.
Thank you. Super. Thank you. Great job. Thank you very much. So the joint meeting here this evening is to consider any changes to the water conservation measures and to get a bead and a read on where we are with respect to our water utilization. You know, we were alerted at the last Select Board meeting that, you know, we'd had some alarms going off in wells, et cetera, and so we really look forward to a more recent update from Tom Temple and Mr. Barr as well, to get us a read on where we are with respect to utilization. And we know that the Town of Harwich has put further conservation measures in effect as of last week. As I said last night at the Summer Residence Advisory Committee, I think it's important that we coordinate going forward with our neighboring towns as we all share the Montomo lens. I think that should be part of our standard operating procedure going forward, so I put that on the table here with the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee present as well. But I'd really like to hear where we are with respect to water, Tom, and Tom, and see what your recommendations are. You did have some recommendations in the package that you sent out, so I'd like to hear those as well. So, thank you, Tom. You're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Select Board members, Water and Sewer Advisory. Tom Temple, Director of Public Works. As you learned last night, at last night's, the meeting from last night, the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs issued a Level 2 drought declaration for Cape Cod region. So that took place yesterday. So that changes the packet a little bit, I think, on our decision-making, and I'll just go through some of their requirements and some of their suggestions as part of this Level 2. They said to minimize all water use, limit outdoor watering to handheld hoses and watering cans, and this should be done between 5:00 p.m. or before 9:00 a.m. With, if there's local water restrictions that we have in place that are stricter than this, then they said to, you know, you should hold on to those restrictions. They also had mentioned in their, you know, their community steps that they would suggest doing, limit or prohibit installation of new sod, seeding and landscaping, water during, within 48 hours of measurable rain, washing of hard surfaces, i.e. sidewalks, patios, driveways, siding, personal vehicles, or boats. And they also said filling of swimming pools, which our regulations don't allow currently, so it would be more strict than their regulations. They also mentioned as a added essential use for defining mass DEPs requirements for health and safety reasons, so that would cover your fire department and any other uses that we, you know, would typically need for practice and doing their jobs, for their regulations, for production of food and fiber, maintenance of livestock, and meeting core functions of essential businesses. So we could think about adding that in as well to the listing of what we suggested. So in the packet, you'll notice that the pumpage for July increased 13,19,400 gallons from the previous July, which was 15.7%. For August 1 through 7, which I have more readings, which, you know, weren't included in your package because we only had, I believe, the 3rd, it's an 18.8% increase, or 3,458,300 gallons for seven days' use. We're typically hitting the low-water storage tank alarms, and we're hitting those three times a week, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday still. It's becoming regular. We have hit them on Tuesdays and Thursdays as well, and those are non-watering days. So we do have people that are watering and excessive use on Tuesdays and Thursdays. You know, in the packet, I mentioned that we must maintain a 75% of the volume of the two water storage tanks, which equates to a 77-foot height in the tanks. The tanks, you know, if totally filled, they're 103 feet high, but we need to try to maintain 77. That's to maintain the adequate pressure that we need for water distribution and fire suppression. We've gone below that twice, to 74 and 73 feet in height, respectively, twice in August already. Low well alarms. We've experienced low alarms on both wells 1 and 2 the past few weeks. Alarms shut down at 3 feet from the top of the screen. This prevents drawing unwanted bacteria and contaminants into the system. And these wells may stay shut down for several hours till they replenish until the groundwater gets high enough so they can stop pumping again. You know, you don't want to bring in any type of bacteria into the system and into our distribution system. So very critical that when those go down and they stay out of the mix, we have to rely on the other wells to pump, and we have to worry about those shutting off because they might hit the same levels on their screens. Excuse me. Excessive equipment use. We're pumping between 17 and 19 hours a day now. The standard industry is 16. This is a heavy burden on our equipment and wells and water treatment. Well monitor shut off, you know, the well motor shut off at 140 degrees Fahrenheit, as I mentioned in the report, and when that happens, they wait till they come back into play and they're cooled off to be able to. And that poses a problem and keeps, you know, our demand at a low level because we can't put them back in service until they reach and cool back up enough to turn back on. So the department's, you know, recommendations at this point would be to ban all water irrigation system use, hand watering, handheld hoses, or watering cans. And I think we would follow the same guidelines. I had put midnight to 7:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. I don't have a problem keeping that in place, as I had mentioned in the report. I would like to add something in here where private wells are also asked to voluntary, you know, voluntarily participate as wells draw from the same water source on Cape Cod. And again, I think public awareness, if we do a reverse 911, electric sign, you know, message boards that we can put out, as well as the mandatory restrictions that we have on the A-frames that you'll see in probably 12 or 13 locations throughout the town, and get the word out, as well as our website. So that would be my recommendation.
Okay, Tom, thank you very much, and I'm certainly going to open up to questions. I guess I'll start with the Board, the Select Board, and then go to the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee. Mr. Castro. Tom, why don't you stay right there, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tom, the Town of Harwich's restrictions seem to allow watering every day of the week. Is that, that's how I'm reading it? I went on their website, and that was the same impression I had. Is that correct? Are you suggesting? Yes, I guess it is. So are you suggesting that we would permit something like that? Or because under the current restrictions, watering is only allowed three days a week in Chatham?
Where they're only allowing hand watering?
Right.
There's not a lot of volume that's coming from the hoses that they're holding versus the system that they're pumping it out. So I think that's why they're allowing it every day. I don't think at this point, if we go to the next level at 3, I would definitely say that it would be restricted to one day a week and limit the hours further. But I have no problem going with, you know, that same, same type of language where it's being watered by hand, or...
What do you, what do you prefer? Do you think we should allow every day of the week with hand watering and hoses and absolutely no watering of irrigation systems? That's what they're doing.
I would say that we maintain the Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and just to be consistent with our, what we've done in the past, keep the watering days the same. It gives us a better tracking for Tuesday and Thursdays to see who's illegally watering when they shouldn't be. As part of, you know, also as part of the EEA requirements, I think what we can do is we can take a look at our readings. We can go through the town, pull up who the high, you know, high, you know, water use people are, and then look to how can we curb that and get them to reduce the watering that they're doing. So I think that's another mechanism for, you know, for EEA requirements, though.
So you're positing Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, we keep those days, but we limit the watering to those particular times, which was 5:00 to 7:00 a.m., I think it was?
Yep.
Midnight to 7:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.?
Correct.
And no watering, absolutely no watering of irrigation systems?
Correct.
Okay. And what about the ban that we have currently on hard surfaces? And we have limitations on...
They're suggesting that we prohibit that.
Yeah.
They're saying that, you know, if you can sweep it and clean it and clean it, that's the way to do it, especially during the drought. They've even said no washing of personal vehicles or boats.
That's what the state is, the state is saying. What are we allowing right now?
We're allowing, on the back part of that, I've included in there the water conservation measures. Let's see.
Okay, I see.
Yeah.
So you can, you can, right now, wash your boat as long as you're doing it within those time periods and you're doing hand watering. Or as long as you're doing it with hand watering, is that?
Yes.
Currently permitted, as well as gardening? Yeah, so what do we, what are the, what is the system of fines that we have currently in place?
We have, the first one is a warning, the second fine is $100, and the third is $200. Harwich is just 100 more on that third step. And so far, I had Pam run the numbers. I didn't see them, but if you have the numbers of the violations that we've sent out for mailings thus far.
I've mailed out a total of 99 violations. Most of those have come back calling, saying that they're on a well. So we are getting a lot of well people.
Okay.
I am suggesting that they follow the same guidelines. We have had no second violations as of yet because we've just started it. So once they've gone through the town once, they'll go back again and look at the, target the same areas and see if they see them again.
So we haven't had to find anybody as yet?
No, we didn't have to find anybody last year either.
Okay. I'll just conclude it at the moment, for the moment, by saying, you know, as we've said in the past, I think whatever we put in place, and I do think we need to do something, because the level of drought has been raised by the state. The system, whatever restrictions we should be put in place should be fair and equitable, and they should be reasonable. I think we should strongly encourage private wells to follow the same restrictions, and I think we have to be really strong on enforcement and notification. And if there are potential fines, I don't know whether the current electronic signs say that you can be fined. So those would be my suggestions at the moment, and I'm anxious to hear what others have to say on both boards. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Castro. Ms. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Tom, what really alarmed me when I was reading this report was the burden on our equipment. And it sounds to me like where we could be moments away from anything sort of breaking down here, which could cause more of a water crisis than we have at this time. I really agree with what Dean had presented here, but I wanted to hear your thoughts on the new construction sod seeding recommendations the state had set. Is that something that we should be considering here in Chatham?
Well, I think right now, if, you know, if they can wait and get through this planting instead of putting in sod, this isn't really the time to put in sod anyways. End of September, you know, pushing the beginning of October, that's when you put the sod in, and by then, you know, we'll be starting to see the water drop anyways because we'll see a lot of the people leaving, and, you know, our water typically drops at that point. So I think that, you know, those that have planted new sod, they can still hand water within the timeframes there, and we're not going to see the usage that we're seeing currently with them on an irrigation. And we're going to be able to notice now when an irrigation system is on because the road is still going to be wet. You're going to see them going, and we can then put a, you know, a little notice on their doors, or hang it on their door, and then send them a notice, and then if it's a second offense, we can find them. So...
Okay. Couple other comments. So I think that that would be an important message to send out as well. Seed lawns grow deeper roots. They're more drought resistant than, obviously, sod. We should be encouraging our citizens to look at more native plantings and whatnot. That's a, that's a, that's a recommendation. That's not, you know, but we're in an emergency right now, I really feel. And I would say that any of, any of what we do here tonight, we should also add in, obviously, the social media side of our communications, but also a direct letter, I believe, would be effective to go out to all the homeowners in the community to expressly say that this is why, and, you know, we are appealing to folks to conserve water going forward. As you said, this is temporary. Hopefully, it's temporary, but if we have such, you know, if we're looking at, you know, our systems, you know, well motors heating up to 140 degrees and then, you know, shutting down, the wells having to shut down to rest, and everything else that's going on, this is really, this is really dire. And, you know, we all have to work together as a community. So, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
And I think, and I think you hit that right on the head, because they do mention, and what we can do is add the link in the letter that we send out to them, for, you know, planting native grass and native plants when they're doing it, because they don't have to be watered as much as some of these other species that they're putting in the ground. So it makes sense to include that in there with it in the letter to the residents.
Yeah, just to follow up for a second, Ms. Davis. A letter to the town, all the town, all the citizens of the town, saying, okay, I think that's a great idea. I think it's a very good idea. Once we, once we determine and agree upon, you know, what our recommendation is, I think...
Mr. Chair, I want to, I really want to stress this, and I think that this is, if it's a matter of cost, we really have to do it anyway. And I also think that, you know, just taking that time will make a big difference in getting the information to people.
And I agree. Michael? Mr. Shell?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. What is the, do you have an organized procedure for observation and enforcement, or is it more or less ad hoc? How do you, it sounded to me as if the violations have been the subject of observation by somebody, and I'm just wondering if there's a, an organized effort to, you know, keep an eye on that, so to speak?
Currently, right now, it's the Water Division. What we're having them do is come in on Tuesdays and Thursdays, because those were two of the non-watering days, and ride throughout the community and check whose systems are on. So we could change the hours so they can come in during the week, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, now that there's no irrigation, if that's... if that's what goes through. We can see who is, who's using irrigations and then send out the warnings, then the fines, et cetera. So right now, it's the water, but we've also talked with the town managers, also talked about utilizing police as well as fire and collecting the information back to the DPW so we can, you know, hit more areas. Because we're limited staff and, and, you know, we just don't have enough boots on the ground to, to cover the, the whole town during the, the early mornings, so.
Yeah, and in light of that, which I fully understand, and I'm not sure exactly how you do it, but it would seem to me ideal if you could engage both landscape contractors and irrigation contractors with some sort of jawboning or encouragement to encourage their clients, or indeed to insist on their clients complying with the, and, and being associated with violations. If you can't enforce it against them, at least associate violations with the contractors where, where that occurs, would be my suggestion.
Yeah, I think that's a good one as well. And, and seek their cooperation in trying to conserve water, because, you know, we're in a drought and our municipal supplies are very low. So I think that's a very reasonable, I think it's a smart one.
Yeah. I mean, this is acute, and people need to understand, this is not just people, you know, taking a few pounds off. This is acute.
Right.
Mr. Chair, just to note, thank you. Pam has had great luck with sending out notices to the landscapers, irrigation specialists, through collaboration with our office and her. We've been able to, to get out as many as we can, but certainly tying, we've been just notifying them of the water restrictions versus what their obligations could be. But thank you.
Yep, I bet. Mr. Matters?
Well, thank you. Purely curiosity. So we got 99 violations, and you made a comment that a lot of them are coming back as, you know, way of private wells. Are we collecting any data of irrigation systems that haven't been registered? Are we getting some of that information?
Great question.
Yes.
Actually, yes. They, the way they collect the data is we have a people forms in place, and they all have iPads. So when they go out, they put the information in the iPad. I get an email that says that this particular address has created a violation. I then look in their account, water account, see if they're registered or not registered. So out of the 99 letters I sent out, there were 25 that were not registered and had no second meter. There were 27 that were registered with no second meter. There were 20 irrigation meters, so they've already installed their irrigation meter. There were 26 that I determined by their water usage, that they were probably on a well, but they, so I just put it well question mark, and if they were not registered and they didn't have a second meter. Most of those, I was correct, they came back that they were on a well, because you can tell by their water usage.
Yep.
And that totaled the 99 that I mailed out.
So we're gonna, we're getting a good amount of data from all this?
Yes.
That's good, that's really good. No, I mean, my, my, my general comment is, I think obviously we need to take some immediate action to deal with the now. But I do think there's obviously a conversation to deal with the future, infrastructure and whatever need we, we need to discuss. But some of this is going to be a big budget item potentially. So yeah, we got, obviously, this is a two-phase conversation, just deal with the immediate and start really planning, because the water has, has to be the priority for this community.
And we, and we have done, and, and my predecessors have, have done hydrologic and hydrology studies to see where additional wells could be put in on the communities. Unfortunately, some of those locations, the quality wasn't that great, so they would require treatment for either iron or manganese removal. So it is expensive, but if we're looking for, you know, our five-year, 10-year plan moving forward, we've got to address that, and we've got to decide which avenue, what direction we want to go. We also talked in previous capitals where we talked about having a temporary storage tank that we could construct and draw down during the, during the winter months. That's something that still we could put back on the table and discuss. We couldn't fill it originally because we didn't have wells six, seven and nine on, on board. So we, we didn't even have the ability to fill those. So we're in a different place now, and with wells, you know, 10 and 11, which should be back in, in, you know, that's going to be on the, on the new program, because we didn't have 10 and 11 at all. They started them and then stopped the construction. We'll, we'll probably have what, 750 gallons?
717.
750 gallons, both of them added together, plus five and eight, when we get eight back online, we'll be in a pretty good place to, to do that. So, you know, we'll, we'll put together, they've already been, Weston and Sampson's already been asked to give us their five-year capital. I told them we'd like to have that by the end of August. We're already starting to do our capital stuff in-house with the DPW. So, you know, we're anxious to get into that direction and try to address the concerns of the SLUC Board.
Yeah, thank you, Tom. Yeah, I think it's important to, to stay ahead of it and, and keep ahead of it. And I feel as though, you know, with PFAS and shutting down some wells, we were kind of starting behind the eight ball for this season. But, you know, the last two or three summers, we've had really dry summers, we've had drought conditions, you know, and the planet's not getting any cooler, it's getting warmer. And I think we're going to be kind of living with this set of facts and circumstances for a while. So, you know, we have asked for a master plan, and hopefully we'll work closely with the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee and Mr. Barr as well, because we've tasked this committee with, with a master plan for water, which I'm sure you guys will be very assistive with. I thought Dr. Duncanson's presentation last night was, was excellent. I, you know, and I think really would be wonderful to have him bring that same presentation to this committee. I asked Joel today to have, you know, make sure that he does touch base with you guys, because I thought it was wonderful. But during that, you know, during the presentation, I, you know, it seems as though we've got a ton of water, the aquifers got plenty of water, yet we haven't, we haven't gotten enough of it out of, out of it yet for Chatham. So I was, I just, there's a lot of work to be done here. It's very interesting stuff. But I really feel as though we've been back in our heels, not on our toes in this one, for a whole host of reasons, not, no blame anywhere. But, but facts and circumstances are such that we do need a master plan for water. We've done a phenomenal job on wastewater. We're leagues ahead of other towns on wastewater, but we, we need to kind of do the same thing for water, if you're fresh water.
And I think we, we doubled back too, as soon as the season draws down a little bit. I think we draw back and we start looking at what we did for restrictions, because I think it's going to happen again. This is the third time since I've been here that we've had level two. So we have, we should have a plan in place for level one, so it's consistent, we can pull it off, off the shelf, put it right into play. Level two, what are we doing? And then if we get to level three. So it makes it easy for everybody, so we're not reinventing the wheel every time and leaving people out or, you know, not being fair to everyone. I think it makes perfect sense to double back and let's see what worked, what didn't work.
Yeah. Yeah, and what, what got me in the, in the detail, and then I'll turf it off to Jeff and his committee, is the, the Monday, Wednesday, Friday cadence of the alarms. I said, wait a second, okay, there's, there's some correlation here between the Monday, Wednesday, Friday irrigation happening and the alarms going off. So I think the move to, to not have irrigation is a, is a good one. We'll start there and see how we do. Mr. Colby, I'm going to turn the meeting over to you to, to poll your committee and have them ask questions of Mr. Temple and Mr. Barr and anybody else. Thank you, Jeff.
Well, thank you very much. I have a lot of thoughts on this topic, but we'll start with Debbie on any questions you have or thoughts you have on this topic?
I thought the SLUC Board did an excellent job. I agree with everything that you said. And I do think this is critical, we have to do something. It's my understanding that right away, as soon as Harwich put in their irrigation ban, they had a significant drop in water usage. So I'm very confident that this is going to really help the situation. I might just add one thing.
Agreed, yeah, agreed.
If a letter goes out, I think it's helpful if property owners know the ramifications of what could happen to, what could happen if we don't do anything. You know, why do they need to do this? Just insert basic information, you know, like if we get low enough on water and your house catches fire, then we might not be able to do anything. So things like that, I think would be very helpful.
All right, Dan?
Yes, I agree with everything that's been proposed for at least temporary measures here. I don't find them at all draconian. You know, I think the health and safety of the people in this town is a lot more important than green lawns and freshly washed cars. And I agree with Debbie, that people should know what the consequences are. It's not that we're just being stingy with water. They're real, serious things, and, you know, fire is one of them. I, I remember that subject being brought up a long time ago, that if we don't have enough pressure, we can't put out any fires, so.
Yeah, and the, the interesting, interesting thing about that was, as we were seeing the low alarm go down to 74 that day, that's when the fire happened in Yarmouth for the, at the transfer station. So we're looking at the alarm, you know, this, this could happen. This could happen here, it could happen anywhere in town, and we're in a lot of trouble if that happens. So it, it is a serious matter. We want to, we want to stay ahead of it, we don't want to be behind it. So I think, you know, the letter going out to everybody is, is a perfect idea. And I think that, you know, we just build on that, so.
All right, thank you.
Oh, yeah, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak and to be sworn in. And now we're organized and we can get on with it. I just have one question or two. One, what is the, it says 140 degrees, but it'll kick off at a certain temp. How much higher is that temp on your pumps?
You could, you can answer that one. You gotta have to come up here.
How you doing? Tom Barr with Weston and Sampson, Chatham Water. So each motor is different based off the manufacturer specs. The ones over in South Chatham is where we've had the most issues with the high temperatures. Well, three kicked off last summer at one point and was down for two days before the motor cleared. Like, there's a little chip inside the motors that will clear out when they get below the core temperature inside there. So when we had measured that motor after it had shut off, it was, it was at about 180 degrees. So we're not that far off. If it's 140 now, and it kicked off last summer in August at 180 when we measured it. So we're pretty close.
All right. Just as a follow-up, do you guys have an extra pump or two around in case things go the wrong direction?
Pumps, no, we don't have an extra pump. So what these are, is they're groundwater wells. So they're dug down, so we have an extra motor. We do have spare motors kicking around if a motor did completely fry out. But in order to get that in, we'd have to get a crane run. So it'd take a day anyways before we could mobilize and get the crane crew to come in and get it, to take the old motor off and put the new motor on. So.
Understood.
So it's a process.
I just have one other question. I mean, clearly, it's, it's hot, it's seasonal, it's a problem. How do you unwind this? Like, is there a timeframe on what, how do you decide that, okay, we're all clear for now? I mean, maybe it's just seasonal into September? Is there a rainfall or a gallonage number that you use?
It's, it's the pumpage. So, and then the hours per day. So right now, as Mr. Temple mentioned, we're pumping about 17 to 19 hours a day, which is a lot. And that's every single well that we have online that is pumping that many hours. So come usually right after Labor Day, we'll drop down. Right now, we're averaging about 3 million gallons a day. After Labor Day, we'll probably drop down to about two to two and a half million gallons a day. And then into October, we're back down into like a million, million and a half. And then over the winter, we're, we're well below a million gallons. So we get this kind of recoup then in the wintertime. We take wells offline, we do maintenance on them, we do maintenance on the motors, have them pulled, have them sent to the shop, get rewound. So we do a lot of maintenance on the equipment over the winter when we, we're only pumping. Middle of January, February, we might pump six hours a day, and that's with maybe three wells offline. So we're in a much better place than having all nine wells pumping right now at 19 hours a day.
Great, thank you very much.
Yep.
Again, thank you for the opportunity. On private wells, you're talking about voluntary. Is there anything that can be done to make it a little more non-voluntary? Is there anything from a fine standpoint that could be done?
There, there really isn't. You know, we, we ask that they follow the same guidelines that, that the rest of the community that's, that's tied into the water distribution system follows. But, you know, you're just trying to keep the honest, honest, and whoever's going to water that's on a, on a private well is probably going to continue to water. So the only difference is we'll get to see them and we'll find out if they are in fact in our system, you know, whether or not we have them registered or not registered. If we don't have any information, it's great, because now it's one, one or two more wells that we're finding on a day-to-day basis that we don't have in our system.
Okay. Would it be possible to set up a call-in number for if anybody sees somebody that is watering the, the street with their...
Yeah. I think that's, I think that's a great suggestion. I think we can try to set that up with IT and see if we can get that to work, because it would be a lot easier just to sit and hear the recorders coming in and, and, you know, where they saw it and, and be able to send out messages, go by and see that it is in fact being watered and, and then send out letters. So anything we can do to get the numbers up and see who's on our wells, and, I mean, who's on town water distribution system and who's on private wells, that helps us out too, so.
And my suggestion is for this letter that would go out, talking about the reason and the severity of why we're doing this, not just the fire, but the bacteria and pump burnout and the cascade effect of something like that. I think that, hey, it's, it's not we're trying to make a few bucks, or it's, it's okay, somebody else will take care of the problem. It's, it really is a significant issue. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Tom. I thought this was a very detailed report. I appreciate all the, the charts and graphs that you included here. I think that was very helpful, especially someone new coming into and reviewing this data. I did have a question related to, you know, one of the things that the state recommends for this level for communities is when you're establishing water use reduction targets to identify the top water users and conduct targeted outreach to help curb their use.
That's, that's what I was mentioning earlier. I think that's what we, we can do now is, is pull from, we can have Weston and Sampson drive through the way that our new system is. They can drive through and, and get readings of all the meters. And we can find out what the highest use is happening, and then we can go ahead and find out why. And if they're, if they're a double meter, if they're a single meter, we can then go ahead and say, how do we get those higher users? And it might be a case where it's one of those essential uses because it's a business. It might be, you know, a laundromat. Okay, that's why, that one's high and it's part of their business. But if it's, you know, not a business and it's, they have nice green lawn, then there's a pretty good chance that, you know, we want to find out ways that we can curb them and stop them from, from watering at this point in time.
Yeah, it's great that you have that capability. I think that's the next step beyond just, you know, reporting what you see, you're driving around. So that's, that's excellent. What I will say, I think, like I said, I don't have too many other questions, but I do want to comment on some of the infrastructure issues with regards to when alarms come on. I do happen to be a little familiar with some other water systems, and that's not common. So that is something I think is definitely to be, you know, a big concern, letting the public know, you know, why we're doing this, as Wes mentioned previously. I think the low-level alarms, especially, you mentioned in, in wells one and two, just targeted alarms, that's, you know, drawdown issues. There's, you know, that's certainly a big concern. And then, as you mentioned before, we, we talked about every Monday, Wednesday, Friday, the tank alarms coming on, that's a, a big concern. And then, of course, twice in August so far, we're only on the, the 10th day, having the fact that the water tanks drop down to that critical level, and just not being able to, you know, provide that firefighting capability is, you know, is a major issue. Like I said, I know there's communities, all communities out there are struggling, but certainly those types of metrics are things that I don't think everyone is experiencing. So that's certainly a, you know, big red flags, I think, with the system that we have. So I think that certainly appropriate measures would be very warranted here. And certainly the irrigation, automatic irrigation ban is something I think most communities are considering, if they haven't already incorporated that. And like I said, several of the communities I'm familiar with are certainly doing that, if not previously, like was mentioned with Harwich, certainly on this new level, this level two significant drought that we're in, is, again, it's a recommendation from the state, and I think everyone's taking that serious. So at least from my perspective, I would certainly support that, that item. I do like the suggestion that was made with regard to the hand watering on the Monday, Wednesday, Friday, so it could help you, you know, monitor those off times to see if there's still some significant use on the other days. I think that's, you know, certainly helpful. So I appreciate all the information and all the comments. I don't have any other questions. I think the, the board asked some great questions and really, you know, teased out the information I was interested in, such as enforcement and, you know, what we're doing in that regard. So that's great.
Well, excellent. Chairman Colby, I, you know, I know we have some comments over here, and I'll go to these guys in a second. I think that I will be asking kind of the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee for a recommendation that we'll take under consideration and probably vote. So if you guys could work it up. I think we've heard pretty much what you want to do, but if you- I think we've heard pretty much what you want to do, but if you could recommend to the board, I think that'd be great. It gets the appropriate flow of information here this evening.
Absolutely.
Ms. Davis?
I just have one question for Tom. So I want to be clear that we understand that landscape aesthetics are not crucial to a business. Saying so if we're looking at a hotel or something that's watering their lawn daily, that's not.
That's correct. If they were a landscape company that had the materials on site and they're trying to keep them alive, that's a critical, you know, that's what I'm looking at.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to make that clear. Thanks.
Mr. Nick Castro.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to sort of direct comment to the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee. Following up on something you touched on in terms of a master plan, I know we're talking about tonight, hopefully coming up with a specific set of recommenda, a specific set of restrictions for the current situation. But in the near and longer term, the master plan is to include consideration of additional wells as well as conservation measures. I think that was the vote that we took. And also, we had some discussion about adjusting the, the water rates relative to irrigation. So, so that's to have a, either utilize either incentives or disincentives. I think Mike talked about this a couple of meetings ago. To make sure that those who are supposed to have a separate meter for your irrigation, you're required to have a separate meter for irrigation, get one in place. They will, they will, they will fare better having that in place in terms of their, their rates. But we talked about possibly having a disincentive in terms of a higher rate if you're not, if you're not connected with that. And I just, I just really wanted to get that out, out there because, you know, we can deal with these immediate needs presently, but we need to have some recommendations and planning for, for the future. And that's why I'm very happy that we have full complement finally on the Water and Sewer Committee with some good people. And I think we're going to be looking to all of you for your, for your support and help in this, in this area. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I know you're going to take comments from the public and I, I know there was an email request to something that made part of the record from Ms. Gibbs and that should be included in the record. But I think you're going to take public comment anyway. Thank you.
Well, I'll take comments from the public and then off to you guys, okay? Off to you, Jeff. Okay, I see hands up virtually here. I see, I think it's Gloria Freeman. Gloria?
Yes. Hi, everyone. Gloria Freeman. I'd like to say that it is great to see Jeff Colby again. I have three issues I would like to address, all within the concept that new water restrictions are needed now, right now, no doubt about it. The first issue is private wells. And the second is moving forward as soon as possible with the addition of a new well or new wells. And number three is the proposed irrigation system survey. Chatham excludes private well owners from its water conservation regulations. Is this because the town believes it does not have authority to impose restrictions on their use?
Yes.
I know that Harwich also requests private well owners to honor the same water restrictions imposed on those who are dependent on the municipal water system. But actually, the State's Department of Environmental Protection Model Water Use Restriction Bylaw includes options for regulating private wells so that there is no inequity between private well users and those strictly on a municipal water system. DEP provides wording for a town or a water district to capture the use of privately owned wells, specifically during times of drought. When recharged to municipal water sources, may be impacted by private well withdrawals. And also to provide the option of instituting more stringent restrictions during times of drought for water customers and private well owners through inclusion of additional restrictions in any required public notice of a state of drought. This is all in Section 6 of the model bylaw. And it, it almost seems too simple. It appears that this can be accomplished by using the words, quote, "water users," end quote, as well as municipal water customers. We all know the goal of water restrictions is to conserve water. But by encouraging the building of private wells, which are not subject to water restrictions, that conservation goal is being bypassed. Chatham needs water restrictions, private well owners included, and they should be reasonable and equitable. For regulating private wells, why aren't we doing that? I don't know if you want to answer me or if I should go on. The rest is rather brief. I'll go on.
Yeah, just go on. Thanks, Gloria. Go on.
Thank you. Town staff has advised us that water, this is in regard to new wells. Town staff has advised us that water conservation is important, but that Chatham's wells are unable to pump sufficient amounts of water to meet our needs. So I hope that the Select Board will immediately address adding more wells because everything, and you know this, takes many, many years to implement. And the last issue is the Chatham Irrigation System Survey. The survey has not been sent out, but I hope you have all seen it. I just wonder who will complete it and if it's worth the time and expense. With so many families leaving mid-August, who will complete this form and submit $250 and get a plumber to do what's required for a second meter? When I finished doing all that was required for my irrigation meter, it cost over $1,000. I read on Facebook last week that the cost to another Chatham resident was over $1,700. So I'm not sure how useful this survey as written will be, and I would encourage you to take a look at it. It sounds as if great strides have been made in greater vigilance in data collection and enforcement. And I think that might be more successful in getting property owners to meet the requirements, which had a deadline of January 2022. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Yes, and thank you, Gloria. And I think we'll tell you, they made some great points. I think we'll take some under advisement. I don't have any immediate answers, at least in my playbook. Mr. Nick Castro has his hand up. Mr. Nick Castro.
Thank you. I just wanted to do, address briefly the subject of the private wells, which Gloria and, Gloria and I emailed yesterday about, and Mr. Bulgardis mentioned it earlier. And I'm a, I'm a private well owner. I've disclosed that multiple times, along with many other people in town. So I feel comfortable speaking about it. I did just quickly try to recall my law school understanding of ownership rights of water underneath the surface and maybe Mike can, can tell me if I'm right or wrong. But my quick review and very, very quick review indicates that in Massachusetts, the original concept was that the property owner owned the water underneath his, the surface, had an absolute right to use as much or as little of it as, as he or she wanted. The courts and the legislature seemed to have been moving away from that to a more reasonable usage standard. I don't know what the current state of the law is. If the town wanted to pursue that, I'd have no problem with it. We should probably get the advice of town council on that particular point. So I just really wanted to get that out there. I would say there is a distinction between those who own private wells and those who do not in that those who own private wells made a considerable financial investment to, to drill that well and make it operational. So those are my, my thoughts. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Nick Castro. And I think that we'll, we'll probably tee it up with Pat Costello. I think that's a great question. Mr. Shaw?
I'm tempted to get into a, a discussion with Mr. Nick Castro of riparian rights and so forth, but I'm, I'm going to restrain myself. The only, and by the way, I, I'm also a private well owner. And, and I don't have any problem with the concept of, of discussing reasonable use or any other equitable basis for putting private well owners on some sort of a similar basis in the context of, of water conservation with people who use them in a municipal system. I'll just say, that's not the problem we came here tonight to solve. That's number one. And number two, I think the thing you have to keep in mind is that the, what we've heard from the staff is that the immediate issue that we want to make sure that we, we address is the town's wells and, and the condition of the equipment and the availability of adequate water for the municipal system. If you were to add in the usage of private well owners, you're talking about a whole different situation. And so in terms of equitable putting, putting private well owners on the same basis as the municipal users, that's a, that's a more complex thing than we're equipped to handle tonight, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Well said. And I, I think it is probably the subject of some future conversation. And I think it's, I think Gloria raises a good point, but it's not something we're going to tackle or solve this evening. I think we have more near-term issues, as you know. We have another, another hand raised here. Nicole, calling on you, Nicole.
Thank you. Good evening, all. I think there have been some wonderful suggestions made, especially when it comes to irrigation systems. But what I've been waiting to hear is we've moved up to a Level 2, but there's been no change in the fining system. I can tell you personally that I did spot someone last week that had a small piece of property and I noticed that their front lawn was green. Of course, most of ours are burnt to a crisp. So I did ask, how do you keep your grass so green? And he said, well, we just put in an irrigation system last year. And I said, well, that may change because we have water issues in Chatham. And his response was, well, I'll just pay the fine. So that really got my attention. And to be perfectly frank, I agree with a letter quickly, letting people know what the consequences are to our town, our fire department, our water, drinking water, whatever it is, and a first notice. But after that, these are not 10-year-olds. It should be a stiff fine. They should know it when they get the warning. As far as I'm concerned, it can be 300, it can be 500, and it keeps going up. Now, the previous speaker did mention that we're coming to the end of the season. We don't know how long this drought is going to last. But it will set a level for next year if and when we have the same problem. I can see a lot of people right now just thinking, 100 bucks, 200 bucks, so what? It's almost September. I think you need to get serious and I think you need to increase those fines for irrigation systems. Again, it comes to being, what is equitable? There are the people that follow the rules, the ones that follow the rules with the second meters, the one that have followed the rules with the restrictions that have been put in, and then there are the ones that just do what they want. Well, they need to pay for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nicole. I, I appreciate your direct approach. It's probably a, a fining issue. I, I would recommend we do remand to the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee for their recommendation going in. I think it's a little late for this evening, but I think it's important for you guys to kind of take it up as an agenda item and say, if you want to put more teeth in the fines, then, then go for it. And I think Mr. Bulgardis has already mentioned it as an approach this evening, and I think there may be some proclivity there. I don't know what other folks think. I just don't think we're ready to deal with it tonight. I think it's more important that we get the recommendations out soon, ASAP, with a letter going out and communicating what the issues are and where we're going about. So I guess I look, unless we have other comments from either the public and/or here, I look for a recommendation from you guys, only because if, if we weren't so time-limited, that's what we would have done. You guys would have reorganized, you would have discussed this issue, you would have come back to us. So I think as a matter of protocol or procedure, then we're going to ask you for your recommendation. I think I know what it's going to be, but I would like to ask you for your recommendation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just pulling this together, it seems like what I'm hearing from the Advisory Committee is a series of recommendations. I'll start that. If there's any that the committee has that I missed, you know, please let me know. But it looks like the recommendation, the first one would be to ban all outdoor water irrigation system use. The second one would be to hand-watering only from the hours of midnight to 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Private wells are requested to comply with those items. Think the other recommendation would be a, a mailing to all residents of some kind. It could be either a letter or a card. I've had some success with the card being a little less expensive. Landscaper outreach, as well as identifying the top water users and targeted outreach to that group as well. Are there any other recommendations that the Advisory Committee would like to make to the Board of Selectmen on this matter?
Talk about a call-in number.
A call-in number? Okay.
And I, I would suggest that a modification to the, to the fine of a notification and then 200, 500, 1,000, basically puts some teeth behind the, the fine system.
I would suggest on that one, as the, the chair mentioned, we don't have time tonight really to address that properly. I think we should take that up at our next meeting. That's my take on it. I don't know if other committee members have, Debbie, have a thought on that?
I just want to ask if the state has a limit on how much we're able to fine? Does anybody know?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that. Certainly something we can investigate. I think it's a good reason to take this up at the next meeting.
Okay. I just thought I had read somewhere that we were limited by what the state allows, but I could be wrong.
All right. Any other recommendations the Advisory Committee has? Not seeing any, I'll entertain a, a motion to advance those recommendations to?
Jeff, Jeff, one, I have a hand over here and I have a hand, Mr. Dr. Dunkinson's got a hand up. Just one minute, please. And then Mr. Shaw has his hand up. So I recognize Mike Shaw.
This is, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Jeff, this is just a clarification. My understanding of the, the entire conversation was that hand-watering would be Monday, Wednesday, Friday. I think the way you stated it was Monday through Friday. And I, I'm, I'm not here to tell you what your recommendation ought to be. I just want to make sure I understand clearly what it is.
Yes, I apologize. Monday, Wednesday, Friday. That should have been clearer.
Thank you. And I'm going to recognize Dr. Dunkinson. Dr. Dunkinson?
Yeah, thank you. As the, your two boards have been discussing, I've been rewording the press release. As you know, we've sent out a press release each time the board has made changes. And with your forbearance, let me read through quickly what I've prepared and make sure it's consistent with what the, the two boards would like to get out. My intent was, basically what you were saying, is we would get that press release out either tonight or first thing tomorrow morning. So basically, here's what I've pulled together listening to the conversation. Water conservation measures, Chatham. On August 10th, 2022, the Select Board implemented enhanced water conservation measures, taking into account into account the state's designation of a Level 2 significant drought status for the Cape. The board discussed the negative impacts of the drought and the town's ability to keep water storage tanks full, providing for fire protection and water system pressure; two, limiting wear and tear and long run times on well infrastructure, parentheses, pumps, motors, et cetera; and then number three, avoiding excess drawdown in public wells to avoid bacterial or other contamination. The board implemented the following water conservation measures effective immediately. Number one, the following are prohibited. A, use of irrigation systems. B, installation of new sod seeding and/or landscaping. C, watering during or within 48 hours after measurable rainfall. And then D, washing of hard surfaces, parentheses, sidewalks, patios, driveways, siding, and then personal vehicles or boat washing. And that language for those four items is basically right from the state's press release of yesterday. Number two, outdoor watering is limited to Monday, Wednesday, or Friday by handheld hoses or watering cans to be used between midnight and 7:00 a.m. or between 5:00 p.m. and 9:00 p.m. Users are asked to be considerate when hand watering, only do so when necessary, and use a hose with a nozzle that shuts off when not being squeezed by the person to avoid a running hose when not attended. Number three, exceptions to the restrictions include health and safety, agriculture and livestock, and core functions of a business such as landscape nursery centers. Violations could result in first offense warning, second offense $100 fine, third offense $200 fine. We then repeat the sentence that we had in previous releases about reminding users that established vegetation needs no more than one inch of water per week, either from precipitation or watering or a combination thereof. We reiterate the sections of the water rules and regulations regarding the ban on filling of swimming pools, the ban on no new irrigation systems by January 1, 2021, and the requirement that irrigation systems have a separate meter no later than 2022 January 1. We then go on to say, we strongly encourage private well owners to adhere to these measures as we all draw from the same aquifer, and then good quality and enough fresh potable water are vital to the health of our community. So unless there are any comments to that, I will prepare that and distribute that out to obviously the Board of Select, the Select Board, the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, and if everybody's good with it, we will get that out to the community, get it up on Channel 18 on the website, like I say, either this evening or first thing tomorrow morning.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Bob. I've got hands up here. Hang on. Okay. I think Cory and then Ms. Davis.
All right. I'm going to tread very, very lightly in these next couple of questions and comments. So this question comes from a social media post that I saw about a neighbor with another neighbor complaining with the kids in the yard on slip and slides outside watering, playing around. By all the terms and phrases we've used, nothing technically covers that type of activity. Obviously, one neighbor had an issue with another neighbor. How does that define in our actions? Some people are going to appreciate what we're doing, some people are going to disagree what we're doing. I want some clarity because there's a second part to this question, but I'll start with the easy part, I'm hoping.
My interpretation would be that would be permissible. Like you said, it's a little bit of a gray area, not specifically addressed in the items that Dr. Bob did such an excellent job outlining, but it's not something that, at this level, would necessarily be discouraged.
Okay. So this is where I'm heading with this. So I am very well aware, the Park and Rec has a summer program. Tomorrow was supposed to be water slide day, but as of the weather forecast, it's next week, and I want clarity if that's a permissible or non-permissible use for the Park and Rec committees to have their function, just so people see it, if they either support it, don't support it. I just want full clarity. I hate that kids would be casualty in this, but I want to be very clear of what we're allowing or not allowing.
So, Mr. Chair, we can cancel that program? I think next week's the last week of camping, anyway.
I would actually hate to have it canceled for the poor kids, but that's—
Whatever the board wants, but it's a hose, and if it's water coming out of a hose, it just seems like it's outdoor watering to me, but I defer to the board.
Is it a Monday, Wednesday, or Friday?
It's a Wednesday. It's Wednesday. Do you know that at midnight?
Just kidding. That was a joke. That was a joke. Ms. Davis?
I'm not going to comment on Cory, and it's not because you're bringing up some questions, but Dr. Bob, that was a pretty comprehensive press release, obviously, and thorough. I'm wondering if we can pare that down into specific bullets that the town can use in other ways to get the message out. I think that probably the Chronicle will pick up that verbatim and just churn it into an article, informative article and whatnot, but I think the next step, maybe our communications director could take that, parse out some of that, and make that into the messages that we're going to be sending out through social media and through more like a card, as Jeff had— Colby had suggested.
Yeah, I had set those up specifically as bullet points with that in line stream.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Mr. Nacastro has his hand up.
Just a question, Bob. When was 1C? I missed that.
1C, Bob. Bob, you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Sorry, I couldn't hear Dean, but he had a question about 1C.
I'm sorry. I didn't— 1C. I didn't put the green switch on.
1C is watering during or within 48 hours after measurable rainfall.
Okay.
And as I said, that comes specifically from the state's guidance. I think we've all experienced driving past properties and seen either irrigation systems or, frankly, I've seen people standing out in the rain watering as well.
Okay. Just two final comments. It was suggested earlier, can we— just as Shereen said, can we distill this down in a concise, short set of bullets that can be used in a robo-call? Can we do a reverse robo-call?
Yeah.
That we should do that. Secondly, this is a pitch to the reporter from the Cape Cod Chronicle who's covering this meeting. I would certainly be thrilled if the Cape Cod Chronicle and their editorial next week highlighted this issue and encouraged compliance in all the towns they cover. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Nacastro. Mr. Shaw, and then off to Jeff Colby.
I have two things here. One, with respect to Cory's issue, I'm going to go out on a limb and say, let's let the kids have their day with the hose, and no matter what time it is, and I will cite in support of that a famous New England writer who started a phrase with foolish consistency is the hobgoblin, and I'll leave it there. I also want— with respect to the press release, as a good, thorough, accurate representation of what I think we're talking about doing here, I'm fine with it to the extent that it gets used in other contexts and pared— excuse me, pared down. I think those are good suggestions. The one thing I want to identify that I think, as I heard the discussion, I'm not sure was consistent with what Dr. Bob read in the press release, and that was the business about washing cars and boats. I thought that we had kind of—we're going to let that go. Frankly, I would—I'm happy to do it the way the press release says it, but I think the discussion might have been the other way around, so—and Shereen is mentioning the sod, which I think Tom dismissed by saying, well, it's not going to happen until September or October anyway, so maybe the answer is it's fine. It's a prohibition of something that won't be happening anyway. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Shaw, and I would agree on the watering our livestock, our youngsters. I think they need to be fed and watered. I did interrupt your process on your recommendation. You had sought a second, and it was seconded, so I still think you need to vote, and then there'll be a recommendation to us. And I think perhaps now you can modify and say you think that the press release that has been presented is also appropriate. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So entertain a motion to endorse the recommendations to the Board of Selectmen that Dr. Dunkinson eloquently prepared. Is there someone that wants to make that motion?
I would make that motion, absolutely.
Okay. Is there—
I'd make that motion, yes.
Excellent. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. Not hearing any. All those in favor will do a roll call vote. Debbie?
Aye.
Yeah, put your— press the button.
Yep.
Yes. Yes.
Cook votes yes.
Aye.
And the Chair votes yes as well. So with that said, that's your recommendation that we have for the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Colby, and I know it's a little unusual, but you know, we had to do this with some alacrity, so I really appreciate your willingness to serve, number one, all of you, and your continued service, Anne and Deb, and number two, your willingness to meet with us this evening and also reorganize so quickly. So thank you very much for your efforts and certainly look forward to working with you going forward. We've got a big task ahead of us, so I'm really looking—we're really looking forward to working with you. Delighted that you reconstituted as such. Welcome. Okay. Recommendation from the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, Mr. Shaw.
May I offer a motion to adopt the recommended action that we've just received from the Water and Sewer Advisory Commission?
I'll second that.
Super, and I'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw.
Aye.
Mr. Metters.
Aye.
And the Chair says aye as well, and I thank you very much. Jill, any other further comments or anybody else? Oh, I see a hand up out there. Did I miss a hand? I can't tell who it is.
It's Ms. Freeman.
It's Gloria Freeman again. Perhaps I'm wrong, but included in Dr. Dunkinson's recommendation, I'm asking if it was included, that private well owners honor the same water restrictions imposed on—
Yes.
Is that included?
It was included, yes, Gloria, yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm sharing my screen right now, and I have the draft press release up. Hopefully, you can see it.
We can.
And in reference to Ms. Freeman's comment, yes, right here towards the bottom of the press release, we strongly encourage private well owners to adhere to these measures as we all draw from the same aquifer.
Super. Thank you, Bob, and thank you, Gloria, and once again, thank you to the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee and to the Select Board for meeting so quickly. Jill.
Mr. Chair, so while Bob still has the press release up, I just want to just draw the board's attention to page two, just in conversation about watering and essential functions of the business. So I think it's at the top of page two. For the exceptions to the restrictions include health and safety, agriculture, livestock, and core functions of a business such as landscapes, landscape nursery centers. Is that as comprehensive as you had wanted it?
Yes. I mean, I speak for the board, but—I think that language is acceptable, yes. Mr. Nacastro has his hand up.
Just wanted to clarify what landscaping means. It means a landscaping business. It doesn't—the center, that modifies center.
So like an agway? So agway gets to water their plants to keep them alive?
That's right. It doesn't mean that someone who's landscaping your lawn can go water your lawn. That's—
No. It does not mean that.
Thank you.
And just one final thing. So the program at the community center is part of our exemption essential fund. Only have a couple more weeks left of campaigning.
I think it's a health and safety issue, Jill.
All right. That's fine. Thank you.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn from—I want you to adjourn your meeting, Mr. Colby, please.
Certainly. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second. All right. Roll call vote. Debbie?
Aye. Anne? Aye.
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 And the Chair votes aye as well.
Thank you very much. And motion to adjourn from the Select Board.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Metters. Second.
Second.
Hey, Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Ms. Shaw.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
And the Chair says aye as well. Thank you very much. Good evening, Chatham.